So, good evening and welcome to our virtual school board meeting. As policy 006.1 limits the attendance of board members at board meetings through electronic communications to extraordinary circumstances. And requires the physical presence of the majority of the school board members, we need to vote to suspend policy until the next meeting. Therefore pursuant to school board policy 003 functions, I am looking for a motion to suspend policy 006.1 until our next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that Susan Hudson.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Board members, please, you know, make sure you identify yourself before each statement and action that you take. That's important because there's individuals from the public that may be using only the audio feature. So they cannot see you when you speak. Please be aware that the meeting is being recorded. And any opinions expressed by any member of the public does not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors. And are solely of those of the presenter. The here but the board hereby expressly disclaims all responsibility or liability for any definatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, and/or still image of this meeting is strictly forbidden without the written permission of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors. If we could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Recker, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam President. Okay, Jen Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown.
Here.
Eric Coombs.
Yeah.
Jim Greenhall. Teresa Brown. Susan Hunziger Hoff.
Here.
Marion McCouch.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Tara Connor Halston.
Here.
Thank you.
And I do need to announce that prior to this meeting, we held an executive session. So minutes, I am looking for approval of the minutes from the meeting on June 22, 2020. Is there a motion?
David Brown will make a motion to approve.
Mary McCowd, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so now we're going to move to the presentation section of our meeting. We are going to do the presentation first so that we hope to answer any questions that you might have with the presentation. And then we will have time for public comment after the presentation. Dr. Evaslaw.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. While it is unfortunate that doesn't seem like everyone has been able to access the meeting. We are pleased that there are so many interested in this really important topic. So thank you for your interest, not only in this issue, but for the children and schools of the Happer Horsham School District. This is indeed a time of uncertainty for all of us. We know that there is, we all have a human nature to seek clarity, to seek certainty. And this is a time that unfortunately, we're not able to deliver that for everyone. We hope that we can take a step closer to providing some certainty and clarity for our thinking and planning for the school year. But we know it's important to all of you. It's important to all of us. And that uncertainty is weighing and taking a toll on all of us. So I do appreciate your flexibility, your understanding as we work through this. And we hope that today's presentation, tonight's presentation can help, help you understand our thought process and where we are along the way. I could tell you that on behalf of the educators within the district. And within the county, quite honestly, we're all agonizing over this decision. This is really challenging situation. We all want to, of course, provide the highest possible degree of quality education we can for our students. While maintaining health and safety for all of our students and staff on a day-to-day basis. When I speak with educators, it's crystal clear, we want to see our students, I think educators, we, we come enter this profession knowing that we value time with students, seeing students grow, seeing them flourish. And knowing that that's important and knowing and valuing what in-person instruction can be and has been here in the district. So we, and we saw in this, in the spring, how challenging online instruction can be. So our challenge now is really to find that balance of thinking through options, sorting through guidance. And trying to present a plan to the community that makes sense for our students and makes sense from a health and safety standpoint. And of course maximizes our learning. So I'm going to, at this, I'm going to share my screen and take us through a presentation. We will share the presentation publicly and place it on the onboard docs that people can, can view the presentation. Let me just share here. Okay, give me one second here. Everyone could see the screen, screen is shared. So our agenda this evening, we're going to talk through a little bit of our purpose, share some timeline and the decision-making process. And then we're going to take you into some of our thoughts and how we're planning this process through this meeting agenda as indicated here. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really to present with you the status of our plan for reopening schools. We want to be as transparent as possible. For all of you on the progress that we're making and be very truthful about the questions that still remain unanswered. We want to ensure that there's clarity on mechanisms in place for to gather feedback. Your perspective as a community is important to us and we'll offer several opportunities for you to gather to share your feedback with us so we could, we can gather all of that. And we want you to leave here, understanding the decision-making timeline and what your, what your options are as a family. So just taking a look at our timeline. We surveyed families at the end of June. We asked students, staff and families on different reopening scenarios on June 24. We've since gathered some of that raw data, but we're still waiting of a synthesized report from our research partners from Hanover Research that will help us with the reopening. At the beginning of July, we formalized a process that can take us through a decision-making protocol that's going to help us come up with an informed recommendation for you. We established a committee structure at that point that really involved a lot of our staff members and stakeholders to try to get, move us again towards making an informed decision. Last week, we facilitated some staff information sessions just to get some, gather some feedback from staff and share with our staff where we are in the process. Tonight, of course, is July 20th and we're presenting, presenting an update. And then in the next week and a half, you can anticipate several ways for you to share your feedback with us. We have an active email address now. It's reopening at Happer Horsham.org. You at any point can share your feedback on the process, make suggestions or voice concerns. We'll be administering another survey based on where we are in the reopening scenarios that we'll be presenting this evening. And we're going to continue our committee work to try to continue to clarify recommendations and unanswered questions that we're, that we're faced with now. And then we plan to come back with, to you and to the Board of School Directors on August 3rd with a recommendation of a health and safety reopening plan. So that plan will be on August 3rd, it will be, you know, still a month prior to the start of school year. But we'll be a step closer to clarity than we are, than we are today. And then our students will return to us on September 8th. So of course, we want to have a solid plan in place for their return. So what has guided us and what's our lens been through this process? Well, we looked at this through several different perspectives and our lens starts with health and safety lens. To ensure that we're assessing all, in all of our decision, decision-making, assessing the health and safety impact and considerations for students and staff. We know that every decision has with it a continuum of safety for each option. You know, safety is not safe or unsafe. It's not that binary. We know that there's a continuum. And each of the scenarios we're presenting this lies somewhere along that continuum. We're approaching this from equity lens, yes?
Your slideshow, it's stuck on the opening page. I don't know if it should be advancing or anything.
It should be advancing. I'm on slide seven, so.
We're still on page one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still on the opening update on reopening schools.
Okay. Let me try to unshare and share again. It's not starting here.
I see your screen.
You click on them one at a time, Scott, or not? There you go. Yeah, if you click on them one at a time, you might have to.
Okay.
Hit the right arrow. Sometimes that works too.
Yep. It's not more of, not going into presentation mode, but is that still readable?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I apologize for that. Please interrupt me if we're having additional technical difficulties. So I'll back up quickly, but I also, I did speak through this, but as an opportunity for visual. This was our meeting purpose that I reviewed. Transition to a timeline overview. And here's a visual of the timeline that I just shared. With having staff sessions, tonight's presentation, opportunities for feedback. And then the health and safety plan on, on August 3rd. So looking through at our lens and our guiding principles, I talked about our health and safety perspective. Our second lens and guiding principle is around equity. To ensure that as we're assessing, as we are making decisions and recommendations. We're assessing any disparate impact on any operation, decision or action that it may have on a particular group of students. And so always ensuring that we are, we are counting for the equity piece. Of course, we are an institution of learning, so we have to assess all of our decision-making process through the lens and light of learning and how our decisions impact learning. And there's a practicality and feasibility perspective. So while there have been some suggestions made. We have to, of course, determine the extent to which a recommendation is feasible, manageable and fiscally possible. So moving on to the guidance that we have been receiving. We have gathered over, over 16 different bodies of, of guidance. That have offered different perspectives on the suggestions for how schools should reopen and considerations for reopening. Those, some of you have, have heard, some have been shared nationally, have been shared in the media. There are perspectives from local counties. Bucks County released their guidance a few weeks ago. Chester County released their guidance shortly thereafter. And Montgomery County just released their guidance last Thursday. And so the challenges of this guidance has been that it hasn't always been aligned. And while we're certain these are reputable, reputable organizations with good intent. It has been challenging to try to sift through the guidance to crosswalk that guidance and determine what makes the most sense for making, helping us make informed decisions. There were two points, two parts of guidance, two bodies of guidance that were released last Thursday that I referenced, the Montgomery County Department of Health Guidance. And the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Pennsylvania Department of Education issued joint guidance. That, that guidance came out on Thursday afternoon. And one of the challenges that we're faced with is which guidance should carry more weight? And that's, there's no clear answer to that, but, but we are, we will be working very closely with the Montgomery County Department of Health. We've met with them multiple times throughout the last few weeks. They've met with an area group of superintendents that meet Montgomery County superintendents. We meet regularly. And the, the Montgomery County Department of Health has been instrumental in those meetings and helped provide guidance. With this guidance, we know that it's evolved and it's changed rapidly. Recommendations have been somewhat inconsistent. In some cases, the recommendations have been contradictory. Especially with social distancing and mask wearing. There are differences, significant differences between local counties. The Bucks County guidance is very different than the Montgomery County guidance. However, the Montgomery County and Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance is relatively consistent. They do maintain a recommendation of six feet of social distancing throughout the day. And haven't have language such as to the maximum extent feasible, which allows for a level of flexibility. But the, the reality is that school as we know it cannot function with a six feet of social distancing at all times throughout, throughout the day-to-day operations. We're also looking at local, state and national trends on the virus itself and the COVID-19, their COVID-19 dashboards. These are live links, by the way, that when the presentation is posted, anyone can, can visit these, visit these links. But we get dated daily updates on, from Johns Hopkins and the Pennsylvania Department of Health on the status of the of COVID-19 in our municipality and in Montgomery County. So this is a snapshot of what the, what the dashboard looks like from Johns Hopkins that we look at daily. And now there's a lot of information to digest there and it may be hard, hard to see, but I'll just point out a couple of things on the slide. This number down here is the number of new cases in the county within, in yesterday. So that number is a 57. And then this chart here to the right indicates that same number for each of the last day, the last 14 days. So you can see we're almost at 60 cases in Montgomery, new cases in Montgomery County. As of today. And then yesterday we were at 28 and then, you know, back up to 60. So it's been over 63 the last 14 days. At a time when in late June it was trending around closer to 20. So the county has experienced somewhat of a spike, not quite the spike that other areas of the state and other areas of the country have. And we haven't in Horsham and in Happer, I haven't experienced the spike necessarily to the extent that other areas of Montgomery County have. But the guidance for the county is, is certainly derived in some way from this information. And there is hope for some consistency across new cases during a 14-day period that we have not yet seen. And we'll continue to monitor that. So let's move forward to our, our planning scenarios. We've, the state has issued this guidance from their phase system of red, yellow and green. And this has not changed recently. However, it has changed since, since the governor initially determined the red, yellow, green criteria. When we are in red or if, if we as a county are in red. The schools would have to be closed. So schools are required to be closed for in-person instruction. And all instruction must be provided via remote learning. There are provisions for certain programs to continue such as meal distribution, which has continued over the summer in Happer Horsham and would continue if we were to go in, into red. If we are in the yellow or green. There is some, there are some differences, but the, the per the state, it's a local decision whether or not schools may provide in-person instruction. And what, what, to what extent that would look like. There are however, requirements of what you must, should and may include in your plan, your health and safety plan that we're required to submit. That's the health and safety plan that we would submit to the board for approval on August 3rd. These next couple of slides have a lot of detail and may be difficult to read. But it may be something worth seeing. What this will speak to is what a plan, health and safety plan has to include. And this will give you a glimpse into all the things that, that committees and the, and the staff is working through to answer these questions. For example, what are the guidelines for when an isolated or quarantined staff member or visitor may return to school? That's a, you know, obviously there's a protocols that we have to work to, that we have to clarify that must be included in a, in a, in a plan if we're in yellow. It's not necessarily a guideline that has to be in place if we're in green. We are currently operating in green in Montgomery County. However, from a, from a school district standpoint, we are coming up with all of these topics and responses to all of these issues regardless of what we're in green, yellow and red. We just don't feel as if we could adequately have a health and safety plan that doesn't speak to all of these questions being answered. And there are, there are a lot, a lot of questions here. So this is page one, which is things that have to be included in the health and safety plan. And then shifting to page two, things that should include in the health and safety plan at the top, the bottom are things that may be included. But our approach, as I stated, is that we're planning for each of these topics in each of the phases. So that we have a response to how we would, how we would and should respond to each. So that was the state's guidance. As far as we're concerned, from, from a local, from a local decision-making process. Here are the, the scenarios that we have narrowed ourselves to. Obviously in red, that would be a state mandated closure. If we're in yellow or green, we're preparing for three, three different possibilities or scenarios for students to continue instruction. Well, technically four, but there's three main and then a fourth I will refer to. The first scenario would be all, all instruction would maybe provided online. Or remote, the remote learning. The second scenario would be a hybrid model that's adopted to ensure that we have students that are in front of us on a day-to-day basis, but there would be some hybrid and I'll explain these in greater detail. But that would result in the billing being about, about 50% occupied at any one time. And then scenario three would be all students return to school every day for a full, for a full day. Even in scenario three, we of course recognize that that does not look like a, like school did look like at the start of last year. We know that there's going to, even in any of these scenarios, school is going to look different than it had been, at least as we work through the pandemic. So an important part of our planning through the scenarios is to ensure that we are able to transition between the possible scenarios. We know that regardless of how we start the year and our recommendation on August 3rd will be about how we will start the year. At any point through the year, we could be transitioning from a full closure to a hybrid to being fully open or any combination or any order of those. The reason this is important is that, as you know, certainly there are conditions beyond the county that might dictate, that might dictate our status. But there also may be local conditions that may require a, a quick transition. We hope this doesn't occur, but if it did, if we were in session and had students in session and there was some type of outbreak in school or, or rise in the cases in our schools, we may have to close locally and transition to red or, or a local, a local closure while the rest of the county did not. So we have to, we've been challenging our staff to think through preparing for the year for all three of these, all three of these scenarios. So I'll talk about each one of those, a little bit more in detail. The first scenario is all, all instruction is promoted, is provided, excuse me, via remote learning. And what I would say to you about this is, 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 has been a consistent thing that we've heard from, from our staff and quite honestly from our families is we did this in the spring, school districts were forced to transition to emergency remote learning in the spring. And school districts everywhere struggle with that. It was tough for families. It was tough for instructors and teachers. It was, it was difficult on the system. We expect ourselves to be, to deliver remote instruction if this is the, if this is the scenario. And at a much better level than we had in the past. And so we have identified some of the concerns that, that were expressed. We've identified some of the higher needs that need, that need to be, that need to be addressed. And we're implementing plans to do that. And I'll talk more about that as, as the presentation evolves. Our second scenario would be a hybrid model. And that's adopted to ensure that the buildings are occupied about 50% of the time. Now, when we were looking at these, at these hybrid models, there are several different options that were considered. One, for example, when we serve, this was part of the survey that was sent to you at the end of June. And we've got some feedback. For example, there were some options that were, that were deemed more desirable than others. I'll give you an example. One option was, you know, you have a group of students that's in for a full week. For one week and then the next week, another group of students is in for a full week. That, that, the, the feedback that we received on that, that particular option was that it was less desirable than the option that we are proposing. Which is, we have our students divided into two cohorts, in essence, and two cohorts. With cohort A being students being in school for Monday and Tuesday. Cohort B being in school for Thursday and Friday. And then Wednesday, instruction continuing but being done remotely. And asynchronously for the opportunity for the buildings to be engaged in a deep cleaning. To make sure that we have the building prepared between the two cohorts. And from a health and safety perspective and others, this was a more desirable hybrid option than, than the others that we pursued. Now there are of course logistics and details that we'd worked through with cohort planning. Our thinking would be that we would keep families, of course, together, K-12. So that there would be some type of alphabet division of who, what students would be in cohort A, what students would be in cohort B. We'd also would ensure that, you know, students that were coming from the same household. Even if they didn't share the same last name would be together. We want, we wouldn't want to separate households for the sake of the cohort division. There are complications with any of these models, but some particular complications with this. As you might imagine, either dividing students by alphabet would leave, not leave an even distribution in each school or in each classroom. So, or each bus, you know, each of those would have, may, may not have a 50/50 split. If we were able to identify who would be in cohort A and who would be in cohort B. At the elementary level would be able to then divide classes in somewhat of a balanced way to try to keep students a balanced number of students in each class. That would be, of course, much more challenging at the secondary level where students transition from teacher to teacher. And some classes would be more balanced than others. This would however, allow us to maintain in-person instruction. And also maintain a much closer alignment with the recommendations of, of social distancing that we have from the county. The third scenario would be students returning to school full day, you know, fully every day. And as I referenced, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the, of course, the model that most of us can envision. That's more, more what we are used to. However, there would have to be some, several stipulations and protocols in place to ensure that students were maintaining safety, safety, safe distancing to the extent possible, maintaining the mask directives that the governor has us under currently. And they would guide us to the extent possible, but we know that there would be, we would be unable to with complete fidelity adhere to the guidelines of the county and the state. The fourth option that I referenced would be an option for all families. And that would be if, we know that some of our families have students who are medically compromised or may have a challenge in. or may have a challenge in, in returning and others, quite frankly, are just not comfortable fully returning to school. And we are going to be offering a, a, we're calling the Hatter Academy, a district-run online program that will be supported by Happer Horsham School District teachers. And that would allow for students to maintain their enrollment in the district. But also maintain an online option for families. And we will be providing more information for families who are interested in that option within the next week and a week or so. But that will be part of our survey that we will be asking families, when we survey families again later this week. We'll be asking if families have an interest in gaining more information on, on this option. Or would want to follow up with, with, with our administrators about, about this program. So let me just share with you briefly some of the survey results that we, that we received from our survey that was asked on June 24th. I did share this, some of these responses briefly with some of our staff members. And one of the things that I, that I just want to say to you upfront is that I've heard frequently that people's perspectives and their views on their comfortability and returning or how to proceed have changed even since June 24th. Which is, you know, speaks to some of the challenges that we're all faced with that. We know that in another month, people could also think differently. We also will know other information about testing, about local rates of, of, of the virus. We'll know a lot more information. So perspectives can change, which is one of the reasons we want to resurvey. But did want to share with you some of the information that was, that was shared, but that we gathered. And again, the survey was administered on June 24th. We had, you know, fourteen hundred fifty-nine respondents. We thank you, those would be the charity perspectives. Over a thousand parents, over two hundred fifty staff members, and we got around a hundred fifty students that shared their perspectives. We first looked at, you know, community impact. And this was, these, these responses that are shared here are only from our families. We did, we did gather this information from staff as well. But this, the data shown here is from our, from our families. And, you know, the takeaway for me for this slide is that, you know, mo- more than half of our families have been negatively impacted by this. In, in a way that we've, one of these options that have been, been described. And, you know, we can't take that lightly. We know that this is, has, has taken its toll on everyone emotionally. But there have been really practical negative impacts for many of our families. And, and that is something that we, we have to maintain in the forefront, forefront of our mind. We asked families, to what extent they're, this is family, staff and students. To what extent do you support or oppose the follow instructional strategies? And the percentages here indicate what, whether or not, what percentage somewhat or strongly support these options. And we asked in June, you know, seventy percent of the respondents said they were, they were somewhat or strongly supportive of being completely in person. Only twenty-six percent was supportive or strongly supportive of completely online. And, you know, in the, about in the middle for hybrid instruction, about somewhat or fifty-nine percent somewhat or strongly support. Are there worse differences between staff and parent results from this? And generally, our staff was less, slightly less favorable to in-person instruction, slightly more favorable to online instruction. And again, I, I think, I say with a pretty decent level of confidence, based on what I've heard from staff, that their perspectives on this have, have changed since June. And so we will, we will, of course, reassess that. And just one more slide here as far as results. Concerns with resuming onsite learning. We know that if we were to return to school in some capacity, that there will be concerns that you've expressed. And, you know, only seventeen percent of the respondents indicated that they didn't have any concerns. So the majority did have some concerns. And so I just wanted to assure you that each of these concerns that are expressed here, from school cleanliness to ensuring social distancing and masks. All of that is thoroughly detailed in the plan that we will be presenting. So let me share with you some of the recommendations from our committees and just give you a sense of some of the work that has been done. However, this is not going to fully capture all of the work that this committees have, have done. They've really been working tirelessly and I've been really impressed by the way the staff is just kind of dived into this. So, so headfirst in a way to try to really be a solution-seeking. So we have a health and safety committee. Again, I know these next few slides are a little word-heavy, but bear with me if you can. With the health and safety perspectives of looking at the essential actions necessary to keep students and staff healthy. Both physically and mentally, like how are we making sure that we are in tune with the social emotional needs of students and staff as well? So there are a lot of prevention strategies and practices that would be in place. And the recommendations that were, that are, that are key recommendations from the committee. Including, you know, providing specific cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting procedures of each facility. Screening procedures for students, for parents. We will ask families to assume a, an active role in, in screening their children before sending them to school. Checking temperatures whenever possible and going through a series of, of questions that could help indicate whether or not a student should be in school. And we will be encouraging students and staff to remain home if sick and revising tenants' pre-procedures accordingly. There'll be handwashing procedures in place, but also intensified hand sanitizer and, and protocols for staff. I mean, you know, one thing we've done in elementary schools, of course, is to, you know, kind of struck, put in some structures around hand washing. We would be doing that at, at all three levels. We're also looking at limiting visitors in the building and some procedures around that. There's no, there's a long list of, of visitors who may come into building, but we may be looking at, you know, issues like remote parent, parent meetings or IEP meetings in the short term to try to limit the number of visitors that are in buildings at any one point. And we're looking at each space and space, classroom spaces individually. And the unique spaces in each building to try to ensure that we have some social distancing. And I'll take you through some of that. Additionally, we're looking at response procedures and strategies. So, you know, we have to have clear direction for how we respond to both monitoring staff and students during the day. But also nursing responses to any potential exposure. So there are all kinds of scenarios, as you might imagine, you know, talked to a couple of them. But, you know, what, how would we respond to someone who'd said, there's a person in my household who tested positive? Or my spouse had worked, worked with someone who had, had tested positive? You know, what are, what are the steps we take to try to ensure that there's strong recommendations for when students or staff would need to quarantine? And the, this is where the county department of health would be very active with us. The county has the capacity to do contact tracing for up to a hundred fifty cases per day. And the county works with us or any organization at doing any contact tracing if there is an active case. They have the capacity to do so now with the number of cases that have emerged in Montgomery County. They're looking to increase staffing to, in the event that there were a rise of cases in the county. But at this point, they can accommodate the contact tracing necessary. And the county, the, the school's responsibility is to work with the county. And the county's responsibility is determine when a, a student or a staff member would need to quarantine. They have the authority to direct someone to quarantine and they would guide us through that process. It's obviously much more granular than that, but that's a big picture overview of some of those, some of those processes. Moving on to key challenges. And again, these are some of the key challenges and unanswered questions for health and safety. We of course, want to make sure that our recommendations are adhered to with fidelity. And there's so many different procedures that there is going to be some training necessary of staff and families and students for, you know, processes for mask-wearing, processes for handwashing, all of these processes and procedures that we have to put in place. We want to be keenly aware of meeting the needs of different student populations and when there may be different health and safety needs. Obviously, we have some of our special education populations, for example, that require our staff to be working much more closely with students. There may be a different set of, of health and safety guidelines, a different set of PPE requirements necessarily, necessary for students or staff in those situations. And there are also individual health concerns of any student or staff member that will require differentiating expectations. We know that there's a, there's a lot of uncertainty around the accessibility of testing. Quite honestly, in June, we had hoped to have more clarity with that by now. We don't have the clarity we'd hope. We hope, we again, will, will hope that we're in a better testing situation in the county by the end of, by the end of August. We have a lot of procedures around families, for families around notification. I'm sure families are going to want to know when, what would be circumstances when you would be notified? What would be circumstances when you would be aware or when quarantining would be required? We would, we want to be crystal clear with families of what those, when they can expect the communication from us and the steps that we're taking to ensure student safety. We also have to rethink all of our typical health and safety procedures. So every year, you know, we have to go screenings for growth, for vision, for hearing. We also have a series of health and safety drills with fire drills, lockdowns, et cetera. All of those need to continue and they need to be re-explored. Adhering to masking and of course, supporting students' social and emotional needs. We have a whole team looking at how we can best support students and their social needs, emotional needs during this time. Excuse me. Moving to our operations and logistics team. This team is looking at a lot of different perspectives, operations and securing sufficient PPE. We have ordered a tremendous amount already of PPE, cleaning and sanitizing materials, including some electrostatic spraying machines. Additional cleaning materials for our staff who'd be working in classrooms and additional support for our custodians. We will be intensifying cleaning routines and looking to add custodial staffing to help support the cleaning needs during this time. There's certain areas that we're going to be installing Plexiglas dividers in certain areas of the building and having some mobile Plexi, not Plexiglas, but those like mobile kind of sneeze guard types of plastic that, that may be in, in place for, for students. We'll be curtailing visitor access and revising some office protocols. We're going to be modifying at all three levels transit procedures. So how can students, how can we transition students between areas but do so safely? That's going to require some different planning and scheduling, including, you know, major transitions such as arrival and dismissal. We anticipate having to revise daily schedules to ensure greater time for arrival and dismissal. I will be adding signage to the building to, to, for students for health and safety measures. And restructuring nurses' offices to ensure that we have isolation rooms in place. We have to look at some specific issues around heat. A day like today, for example, in a building like Keith Valley, for example, which doesn't have air conditioning in much of the building, could pose significant health and safety challenges. So there might be some, there will be some specific health and safety and operations protocols specific to each building. We'll have to modify recess to, to, you know, and I just wanted to say, this may be a good spot to say it's, some of this is so, it's so saddening to me, to be frank, that we, that, you know, these things that kids enjoy. When we work towards making our schools more collaborative and the students trying to construct positive activities where they're working together. And things that we've been working hard on as a district the last several years, to take a step backwards from that is, is, is sad and hopefully short-term. But these are recommendations in the meantime to try to keep us as safe as possible. So we will have to modify recess in some capacity in our outdoor, outdoor time. And then there's a whole set of guidelines for how we will have to revise lunches. As you can imagine, you know, cafeteria and lunch, lunch areas would be an area that could be particularly challenging. Obviously, you cannot have a mask on when you're eating. The recommendation of six feet social distancing and students not being able to face one another is tremendously challenging in our cafeterias at all three levels. And so we are looking at, we're having to revise lunch procedures. And cafeteria procedures that may include schedule changes. I may include grab and go lunches, trying to minimize money transfer. Some students possibly eating in classrooms, other spaces throughout, in, throughout the building. We've explored renting tent areas or areas to have students that could possibly spread out during, during lunchtime. When possible, all things that are, that are increasingly challenging, obviously more challenging if we have every student back every day. But challenging even in the best of scenarios. Some additional recommendations around transportation. There's some transportation-specific PPE that we will be asking our bus drivers to wear, but also some limitations with that, with their visibility. We cannot have anything over their face or their eyes, obviously, when they're driving the vehicle. So there are some challenges with that. There is, we currently have operate our transportation with two or in some cases, three students per seat. We do not have the capacity to run multiple bus runs for each level each day. So what we will be asking families to do is to encourage in families, when possible, to drive their students to school. We know that creates challenges for some families and understand that. We're also going to be asking families if they would be willing to, on a temporary basis, opt out of receiving transportation from the district. We know that they would, of, of course, be open to receiving that at any point if they chose to need, need transportation or that, that were to change. But knowing that number could help us plan our bus routes in a way that could help distance students on the bus. But we will be, of course, requiring masks on the bus, having students sit together when possible on the bus. And if they sit together, excuse me, if they're in the same household on the bus, try to limit two to a seat. And encourage students to face forward to the extent possible. Again, all, all challenges. To give you a sense of what some of this would look like in the classroom, just have a couple of pictures to share with you. This is a collaborative space in Halliwell, a STEM room that is built, designed, as you can see on the left, to be collaboratively to students seating the table facing one another that would not meet the recommendation. So we would repurpose that room. This happens to be an example of when we were able to do it relatively efficiently. Excuse me, it's still maintained in mainstains and programming without limiting seating too much. But with that is not the case in, in most of our spaces. For example, another Halliwell classroom, classrooms with desks that are six feet apart, which is recommended versus the same classroom with us three, three feet apart. You know, obviously you're having roughly half the number of desks that can, that can be seated, that can be placed in a room. Again, and you notice these seats are going to be facing forward and not be able to be grouped together. Another example of Blair Mill Elementary, again, three feet versus six feet. Blair Mill happens to have some larger classrooms, but still you can see some of the challenges with six feet, desk, desk being at six feet apart. At the high school, we see many of our spaces that have been slowly redesigned over the years to be more collaborative in nature, have flexible seating. You know, a challenge we are facing as we have purchased fewer and fewer desks the last few years because of more collaborative seating that's been transitioned to our classrooms. We have to rethink that. And so we're trying to repurpose desks in a way that makes sense, where students could be faced forward. And unfortunately, again, not grouped collaboratively. Couple more examples at Happer Horsham. It looks like a pretty enjoyable class to be in to with some lawn chairs. But some of that flexible seating will be, present challenges. And then you can see a science room at the high school. Where, in this case, housing twenty-four desks. You know, we would not be able to accommodate twenty-four students to ensure social distancing if this were to be the case. So you have two more committees, instruction and technology. So I'm going to take you through some of the instructional recommendations from our instructional committee. And again, this is rooted in knowing that regardless of the model that we are presenting, we want instruction to be sound. If we are in a remote learning or planning for that. We want to ensure that we are doing it much more efficiently than we have or others have in the past. So some of our key recommendations that allow for some smooth transitioning between the models. Would be ensuring that we have consistent expectations and how we house our course content. So if, you know, if we're using Canvas, there's some expectations for how Canvas would be used. Students, teachers and parents would share that, share that understanding. Standardize our video conferencing tools. We're looking to work with Microsoft Teams. Well, I know last year there were multiple platforms that were being used that. Some, in some cases were challenging for families and staff. Microsoft Teams is a platform that has going to have additional capabilities. In the fall, and we think that that was, that was the recommendation so for, so, so far. And then clarifying expectations for hybrid in school and at home learning days. One of the challenges, as you might imagine, is if we were in a hybrid model. And so we have teachers planning both synchronous and asynchronous instruction every day. So you have some kids in front of you, some kids at home. What would be expectations that we would, that we would expect for each of those? And then parents would, would have an understanding and knowing how frequently they'd be seeing their teachers. What would the minimum expectations be for having synchronous in person, you know, even if it's virtual. At time with their teacher. And we're also working on identifying issues to around learning loss. We know that there are, that there are some students who, who. Through no fault of their own, didn't have, you know, the, the full educational experience that. They would have it, they had been in, in session. And we of course want to meet, meet students where they are. And identify where, where they are in their, in their learning as they return to us. Some challenges that we're faced with from the instructional lens. Effectively delivering a comprehensive program while maintaining socially distancing, social distancing is going to be challenging and unique at, at each level. We have to build our staff capacity and our improved staff conferences in a range of areas. And again, this is no, in, in no way a fault. Of our teachers. But our teachers are, have been tasked with. Guiding students through different instructional platforms and continuing to deliver a high level of instruction. Learning how students best are assessed in an online world is different than they are in in person. Learning best practices around instruction is different in the online world. So working on those staff competencies is key. And with that, ensuring that we have curricular alignment in place across the district. That if, you know, students, fourth grade experience at one elementary school. Is not going to be in any way a lesser experience than they were at a different, at a different school. Understanding there are a unique set of needs for different subgroups. We may be looking at what instructional needs may need to be provided for a different program. For example. If we're in a hybrid model, we may be making recommendations that certain subgroups of our population. Receive a more intense in-person experience. Some of our students with special needs may need to be in school, in-person instruction. Four days a week as opposed to two if we were in the hybrid, hybrid model. So we are looking at not just that subpopulation, but others as well. We are looking at our unique student programs and how they're impacting our schedules. We support a lot of students proudly as a good 10, the Eastern Center. And we know that we want to maintain that Eastern Center. Programming for our students regardless of the model that we have. So we're working with them. And our local districts to try to make sure that does programming, that programming will continue without, without any, any, any. Interruption. I will say that that's an additional transportation challenge I didn't mention. But when we, when we are responsible for transporting students, not only to our. School district schools, but to our local schools in the, in multiple counties. We, we transport our private school students and some students in special programs at multiple, at multiple school districts. And we have a staff that of course lives in multiple districts. So we have. Challenges that any, anytime a program that we were to adopt is different from that. That a, a staff member's home district would, would be offering is going to result in some childcare challenges. And, 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 and unique challenges to that, to the population. We also want to make recommendations for what are some of the higher risk activities for our programs that. Are unique and they, for example, they don't, they wouldn't typically be seen as higher risk programs. But with the virus, you know, issues like chorus and band tech ed, we have a lot of collaborative hands-on working. What are specific recommendations around how to deliver instruction to those programs, to students in those programs? We, we want to make sure we have a plan in place that can continue a student's program. If a student were to need to be quarantined. That's, that's a challenge that any of us could face and recognize that if a staff member be quarantined, have a response for that as well. And so transitioning to our technology committee and it'll be done shortly. So thank you for your patience. The technology committee is looking at obviously things from a technology lens, but both a hardware. And instructional technology perspective. So from a hardware perspective, we want to ensure that every, every student has a device from K to, K to 12. We are in a really good place with this. We do have iPads in place for students in grades K one and laptops for students in grade two, 12. We are planning a distribution for all families and students of our devices in August. So that regardless of the model we open, there will be no disruption for technology access. And we're assessing, ensuring home connectivity with families. So this is something that we need, we need your help with. We believe that we're moving closer and closer to supporting as many families, hopefully the hope that all of our families have. Home internet connectivity. We've worked with hotspots and Comcast. To ensure that families that need, that need that connection are granted that. But your communication around that again, will be, will be helpful. As referenced earlier, some consistent video conferencing and platforms. And then just from a physical plant standpoint, we know, we all know that there are shared computer spaces. How we would, we would, should be able to minimize those with the device, the one-to-one devices. From an instructional standpoint, we need to identify what are some of the high leverage instructional technology tools? One of the things that we experienced that most districts experienced in the spring was. When we went remote, there were several companies that granted districts this free access to their, their services and products. And that was very kind of them at the moment. They're now, most of them are charging now for those, for those instructional technology tools. So we're identifying which of the tools are really high leverage tools that we would want to continue. And investing in those to, that we're going to get the most instructional impact from the, the tools that we're, that we've used. It continues to be a challenge to maintain an infrastructure to support hardware and so, and support needs there's. That could be challenging based on how, what, whatever model we're in. And we'll continue to try to strive to ensure home connection for everyone. So just some next steps as we move forward. I'm going to encourage staff, our staff members, community members, students, please, we'd love to hear from our students. What feedback that, that you all have on, on the reopening, we have a dedicated email address reopening at Happer Horsham that's active. That anyone may share their thoughts. We will be distributing a survey this week. Probably closer to the end of the week, just to assess our, your family's interest in the online option for students that Hatter Academy. Asking you, your interest or willingness to perhaps consider transportation opt-out. And which of the reopening scenarios is preferable from your perspective? We will be gathering that information and we will be presenting a plan. A little more in, in depth and detailed to you and to the, to the board and the community on August 3rd. With that, I thank you for your attention and, and concern around this really important matter. We, we all, we will take board questions at this point.
Tara Connor Halston. Can I ask what the difference is between virtual learning and the cyber school that we would offer?
Sure, sure. So the, the, the cyber school would be an option for families. If they were to wanted that option regardless of what the scenario, reopening scenario would be. So the, it, it may look similar to what we would offer all students if we were in full closure. But the, the value of committing to the Hatter Academy would be that you would be committing to an, an online program. Regardless of the scenario.
Okay. And also the, the transportation, excuse me, opt-out. At the high school, we might have more possibility for that if we had enough student parking. Have we considered, if we could find more parking that the students could use to give more of them a parking pass?
We did ask our high school administrators to explore that, explore it, you know. We, they're basically looking at all of their normal procedures and seeing how we can make them as efficient and, as possible. It helps us to have more students drive to school in this case.
Right.
That's great.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, Jen Wilson. If somebody enrolled in, say, the, the cyber academy and they found it wasn't working for their students, would they be able to? Transition back to the in-person? Education?
We, we would, that, that's the hope is we would plan for it to be an easy transition for students to return in the, in the regular program. What could be challenging would be students that would want to go back and forth. That would be, that would be particularly challenging. But to be frank, we, we want as many of our students as possible to be part of our program. And so we want to work with families to try to meet their needs if that was a choice.
I would just like to say that you, you provided a lot of information. And it was very well thought out and presented very well. I would like to take the opportunity to digest. And really dig deeper into it and look forward to having a open discussion on August 3rd. On a decision, but I really thought the presentation was, it contained a lot of information. We all know it's a very fluid situation that we're going through. And you know, as we move, as we mentioned earlier, our timing, I think is correct. And that the governor may step in the next week and make all of this a moot point. And, and as we look at the districts around us, we're, we're also going to have to adjust. Because we do share right transportation with, with multiple districts. And as they go in different ways, we're going to have to adjust to that also. So I think that it was well done and well put together. So I applaud you and your team on that.
Thank you. And we will, we will post the presentation also so that families also have an opportunity to go through. And, and, and digest it. It is a lot. There is a lot of information. So thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? All right, then do we want to move to the public comment section? Okay. All right. So this is the time for public to offer the comments. As a reminder, the board generally does not engage in dialogue during public comment. We will however, take note of any questions and we will try to answer, you know, common themes for questions. If we are able to answer those questions. Any member of the public wishing to make a comment. Should at this time raise your hand. You can do that in Zoom by hovering your mouse over the Zoom toolbar and clicking on the raise hand button. Or if you have called in, you can press the star nine on your phone. This is going to alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. And when it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and prompted that it is your turn to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes and when your time has expired, you will be returned to a status of meeting participant. All other normal procedures for public comment apply. Please state your name, address and municipality of residence. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I will announce the name of the person who's trying to just speak, please give, please give it a second or two from the top. The buttons, whatever it is, you will those take a second. So just give it a second or two and then start speaking. These will just go the order of the hands were raised. So first is Paul from Milligan and. Just a second here. There we go. You are now allowed to, oh, no, all dispute. So I can see the audience hand. All right. Next up is Pixel2XL. So I guess it's, that's the name as it appears in Zoom. So you are unmuted. You can unmute your phone and go ahead and speak. Pixel2XL. I will move on and lower that hand. If you, I do have a question, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll go back to this. Next up is Erica Ortiz. Okay, you are unmuted. Go ahead, Erica.
Oh, perfect. Um, my name's Erica. I live in Philadelphia County. However, I have a sibling that goes to Happer Horsham. So I'm sitting in on. Family behalf. Couple of questions slash comments. Is there a threshold that you anticipate seeing before you close the schools? In terms of exposure, so if one, two, three, four students or staff members in any given building. Test positive, when is that going to prompt the school to close down? My concern is that we closed Montgomery County when we had less cases back in March than we do currently now. So the numbers are just not making sense to me as to how it doesn't feel safe to open up. With that number in, in my head. The other issue, well, the other statement is, is have you figured out a percentage of instructional time? That may be lost with each of the different options, hybrid versus online versus the in-school. I imagine with the hybrid and the online, there has to be some sort of percentage of instructional time that's lost with each of those. And then with Pennsylvania still having to adhere to the 180 school days, 999 hours for the lower grades, 900 for the upper grades. Is that affected by your choice of going to remote learning? Or if you have to do it intermittently, like you mentioned, and if the state closes for any reason? That's all.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to move to the next person, Greg?
Greg?
It looks like. I apologize, I was muted. I was talking to someone, telling them, I apologize. I, next up is Callan, C-A-L-L-A-N, a lot of S. You are allowed to talk. You can unmute your phone and go ahead and speak. There we go. You are unmuted.
All right. Hi, my name is Mr. Callan. My daughter attends there. I also happen to be a college professor, so I'm living the same experiences that your faculty are. But I, I guess my, my point or my question is. What are you doing to improve the overall performance of your faculty's ability to deliver lessons online? Because. I don't want to point fingers or anything, but it was somewhat disappointing for me. I felt the last quarter of the session that my daughter's education. I felt the last quarter of the session that my daughter's education she was getting, you know. She wasn't a, there weren't any live lectures going on. I became her geometry teacher. And and I know it's new for a lot of people, and you even mentioned that that it was new. But I really was a little disappointed in the. Quality of the education you were trying to deliver of the last quarter of the year. So if I choose to keep Carly home under those situations. I know you mentioned Microsoft Teams and some software that we have used like that, or maybe WebEx is a possibility. But what are you, what training and what methods are you giving your faculty to improve these online? Lessons for the students, because quite honestly, I I felt like the last quarter of her experience in 10th grade. Was really just a list of things to do. There was no teaching involved. There was no objectives delivered. And it basically became me, you know, helping her with all our assignments.
Okay, thank you. Greg, you want to move to the next person, please?
Next up is Lisa. That is how the name appears, just Lisa. You are now allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is Lisa Carrion. I have a son going into his junior year. I first would like to say I 100% agree with the previous question and comments. Not only I did not personally have to go through that, but I know a lot of other parents did. Basically had to teach their kids throughout the the time they were home. School, came home from work and had to teach their children till 11, 12 o'clock at night. Because there were teachers that were not available. But however, my question is, you did mention about the cleaning. You are going to be having the custodians do the disinfecting. My concern is you did not mention maybe having a third party cleaning company come out. But I know for a fact this district is struggling with custodians as it is trying to get the help. And I I'm just a little concerned because. I don't know how. They are going to do all this cleaning in a short amount of time and do it the proper way. And do it with people watching them do it the correct way. So that is a big concern for me as far as maybe think about hiring a third party cleaning company to come in and actually do it. I know on the job postings, you guys are constantly looking for custodians. And I know Hattborough Horsham is the lowest paying school district for custodians. So and how will you be able to get those new custodians in? And have this start up by September 8th if your plan is to have the kids come in either. Part time, you know, every week. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
And next up we have Nicole, N I C O L E. Nicole, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is Nicole Panicker, and my son is going into fifth grade. I actually had two things I wanted to say. First, if the kids are going to have a hybrid schedule, will the teacher be meeting with them more than once a week for 45 minutes? And the second thing is if there is a hybrid schedule and the children are in class for two days and then home for two days. And then one day of online learning for the for the days that they are in class. Will there be a Zoom or a WebEx so that the children that are at home are receiving the same lessons as the children in school? To make sure that everything across the board, all the children are learning the same thing. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is B Hart, H A R T.
Yes, hi, Brianna Hart, Springdale Avenue in Hattborough. I have an incoming eighth grader and an incoming kindergartner this year. My one question was actually similar to Nicole's was just how. How will it be handled in a hybrid model? Will there be one teacher who has half of their students at home and half in school on a given day? And if that's the case, how, I'm a former teacher, so I'm wondering how they would handle. It seems like the online portion of that, they won't have access to the teacher because the teacher will be in class with the other students. For seven hours a day. So I'm wondering how those students are going to have their needs met. And how will the teachers be able to teach essentially two cohorts of students at once in two different places? And then my other question is more for the. Secondary, but I guess elementary as well. Will students still be able to switch classes, switch teachers? And will they still have access to things like specials, foreign language, STEM classes, different electives and clubs and all of the. Richness that our district is known for typically so that my, you know, can my eighth grader still? Take a French class and a STEM class and and can a high schooler take all of those electives that are typically offered? And can my kindergartner go to music class rather than his kindergarten teacher now having to be his music teacher and his art teacher and his gym teacher? And all of those things that we keep seeing. The guidelines coming down from different agencies saying that they need to stay with one teacher all day. So I just want to. Know how that's going to work since each teacher is not certified to teach every single subject. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, you want me to step in and answer a few of these? Yes, so thank you all for your questions. I'll just speak to a couple of the issues that have been that have been raised. And thank you for your questions. Just know know that many of these are issues we are aware of and working through, but don't have complete answers for yet. And I say that just to be as transparent as possible where we are with the process. We are meeting with experts from CHOP this week. And my in the Department of Montgomery County Department of Health to have some some clear, more clear guidance on what would the circumstances be for when a building or classroom would have to close? That will be part of our health and safety plan that we will that we will bring forward. Regarding the 180 days that is a requirement that we'll have to meet regardless of the regardless of the scenario that we propose. We every student will have to have 180 days of instruction. So that also is is part of our plan that has to be approved from the state. If we are recommending that a student's day be counted anything other than an in person day. We have to make that recommendation to Pete to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So that would be part of our presentation on the third. Couple of comments just were about the general quality of the instruction that was that was delivered. We anticipate not only being better at this, but also being more clear with what parents should expect. And students should expect as far as how much time they will be seeing their teacher. That will be increased. There's there won't be a scenario where where students are seeing their teacher once a week. That's that's not that would not be acceptable by any means. We obviously want to maximize in person time and face to face time with the teacher to the extent possible. And that and that the quality deliver delivery of instruction with that is the identification of. What are high leverage professional development needs? And this is a challenge that we're that we're working through now. Is there a lot of aspects of this plan that require some level of training? I don't, there are health and safety training that has to happen. There's also instructional professional development that has to occur. To ensure that teachers are better at assessing students remotely, providing instruction for students remotely. And the question about hybrid is how do you do that both input when you have some students in person and some at home? So we're looking at things like how do we connect students who are at home while you have may have a group in in person? What does that Wednesday look like if we're in a deep clean and instruction is continued? That's an opportunity for kids to perhaps across cohorts collaborate virtually and have time with their teacher. And so that is all part of the instructional committee's task that they are working on. Regarding the last question about a student's program. Part of the the students' experience in our district is they have a robust opportunity for special areas and areas of interest. We want to sacrifice a student's program to the least extent possible, hopefully not at all. So we want to be able to include our special area courses in our students' programs that may look a little bit different. In some ways, maybe this this hasn't been decided yet, but just some of the things that are being considered. Students at the elementary level, for example, staying in place and having teachers move into the classroom. We have an art teacher come in, a music teacher come into the classroom. That's a possibility. All of those again are less than ideal because art is best done in a collaborative art space. But we want the art experience to continue. We want the special area experience to continue. And so that is that is part of our planning and will be part of our part of the plan.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Greg, do you want to go to the next person?
We just hear from Jessica. Where is Jessica next?
Jessica's next.
Okay. So Jessica, you can unmute and go ahead and speak.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. So first of all, I am in the Hattborough Horsham School District. I live in the borough of Hattborough. I've got two young kids, one this past year was in kindergarten, the other was in first grade. So they're going to be moving into the first and second grade. And I do work in the in the benefits slash healthcare field, so I absolutely understand. How challenging this whole situation is. But so I I have three questions. I'll try to keep them brief. So I'm a working parent. My husband is also a working parent. Both have full time jobs, two young elementary school kids. Both of whom have ADHD. My youngest, who's going into the first grade, also has developmental delay. Multiple supports are needed through an IEP. What is what is going to be done to get young kids who, you know. Kids that young, it's tough to keep them engaged if they don't have a developmental delay or they don't have a behavioral health condition. But for kids that do have those hidden disabilities. What supports are going to be put in place to keep those kids engaged to sit through lessons, virtual lessons? And additionally, what's what additional behavioral and emotional supports could be offered to these kids that they're missing? Their school was their routine and not being in that routine is very distressing to them. And so I'm just curious about what thoughts have gone into that. And then the second question that I have is what considerations are being taken for parents who work full time and can't devote the time to teach their kids during the day? What I think the first speaker had mentioned the, you know, really having to be the teacher's first kid. I'm not a teacher for a reason. I'm not very good at it. I'm really great at my job. I'm not great at at being a teacher. And my concern is that I don't want to have to choose between keeping my job or providing very basic education to my kids. And I feel like if the way that things were last year, that would ultimately be, I would have to make that decision. And I guess my final question is just for these kids that are experiencing an excess amount of stress from the lack of routine, from the change in structure. My kids, there's other countless kids that are, you know, have behavioral health and emotional issues going on. Is there going to be any opportunity to get them support that where for with people that are trained to deal with them? That with kids that young that can actually help them and help them understand what's happening and help them work through their emotions. My daughter, for example, the more she's at home, the more stressed she is about leaving home. And, you know, that's something that I think is going to be a real shock to the system at the come of the school year. So I'm just wondering if there's anything being put in place to prepare for kids that have those additional emotional needs on top of what? You know, just the general population of of young kids are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Greg, do you?
All right, the next is the username is B A R A N T H O. You are unmuted. And just a reminder for people, please give your name and address before you ask a question or make a comment.
Thank you, Thomas Barron, Church Road, Horsham. Just a couple of questions. Firstly, regarding lunch, has it been thought of to possibly put. A folding tables or something to that effect into possibly gymnasiums in order to to keep the social distancing up? Secondly, there was some reference to the possibility of some kids possibly, if we go hybrid. Some kids possibly being in school more days per week than others if it was necessary. And I think we would definitely need some clarification on that. And thirdly, regarding the professional development that was referenced that teachers need, obviously, you know, before this, many teachers didn't teach. Online, so certainly understandable. But I guess the question is, I think it's been pretty clear since at least May or June that the odds were pretty good. That some sort of hybrid or online learning was going to happen this year. Why are we waiting to this point to start that for those teachers? And why haven't they been working on that this whole time? And sorry, I apologize. One last thing. Is there any talk or any word as to what's going to happen with aftercare? For the days that the children are are in school? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nicole Lester. You should be able to unmute and go ahead and reminder, name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Lester. I am on Downey Drive in Horsham. My question, I I'm kind of lucky. I'm going to have a senior, so I don't have to worry about childcare with all this. And I too am a healthcare professional, so I do understand the challenges that are in place. But I also teach in the evenings and I too had to adapt and move the college course that I teach to a home format. My concern with when my son Devin was a junior last year, there was no accountability. We'd love to to think that our high schoolers are capable of managing their time and doing their lessons on time, what have you. But I found that he was up all night long and then sleeping all day. And the last three weeks of school, he kind of buckled down to try and just do this list of assignments that were that were sent out. Once a week, maybe twice a week to get done. I would understand if like the senior, if the high schoolers went to a full online to allow more open classroom space for the younger children and to help parents out. And space those younger kids throughout the high school for additional safety. But as far as the high schoolers, where can we see some accountability? With my students, for the class that I taught, they had to be online those same class nights for this full four hours. And I had to teach from my computer in my office and provide everything the best as I could. But there definitely needs to be some accountability. I'm sure there is a lot of, there are a lot of students out there who are capable of managing their times better. But I think there's probably just amount, just the same amount out there who are not. Is there any way that you guys can implement a timeframe where the students must be logged on? They have to account for their time, just to also keep some sense of normalcy. Because even when they go off to college the next year, you know, we can't guarantee they're not going to be up all night, but they still have to keep some sort of a normal cycle. That has created a real problem in our house because he's up keeping me awake and I still had to work all day seeing patients. So accountability, if the high schoolers have to be home, I can understand that. I would prefer to help parents of younger children be able to find coverage because I was there once also. But where can we get, can we implement some sort of accountability for these students to be online? Have teacher interaction to ensure that they are they are truly learning something. Because you can read, you can read jot a paragraph down and still not actually learn anything. I guess that's my question slash comment.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Hey, next up we have Amy. Should be able to unmute this speaker.
Hi, how are you? I am Amy McKinney. I live on Fieldstone Lane in Horsham. I have three kids, one in elementary, one middle, and one high school. Mine is not really a question, just more of a suggestion. I know in the past there was talks of the high school starting. The high school starting at a later time of day. Which, trust me, I'm not a fan of, suck it up and go to school when you're supposed to, but in this situation. Maybe an option, since buses will be limited. Having the high school kids start later at the elementary time and put the elementary school kids at the high school time. So they could help families with dropping, the ones that drive could drive neighbors' kids and their siblings to and from school. Potentially. So just the suggestion to maybe consider with the busing situation. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Hey, next up is Stephanie Baum or Babe. You should be able to unmute and go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Baum. My son will be entering Keith Valley this year. I have, I guess, a question and a comment. Is it possible to have the teachers? Do like in in order to be able to do synchronous learning, which I believe. The children are are needing at this point to to maintain engagement at all levels. To be able to stream the teachers teaching their content, whether they're in the classroom and the children are home. Or they're home as well. However, you know, it gets done, I'm thinking that if the teachers are even teaching in class. And half the students are there in the hybrid situation and the other half is home. That that way, everybody would be receiving the same content. So that's one, I guess, suggestion. And the other, I guess, concern about the hybrid would be is. For for parents to be able to schedule and. Provide transportation and provide supervision for their children. To have the option of kids going to school the same two days per week as opposed to flip flopping it. One week, Monday, Tuesday, the next week, Thursday, Friday. So that's just a suggestion to kind of have more like, you know, synchrony to have. The students, let's say, however you would do it A through L, everybody's Monday, Tuesday. And then the second half, you're always Thursday, Friday, so that parents can. Schedule their lives and their kids' lives. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, next up we have Chelsea Williams. Just a sec. All right, Chelsea, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Yes, thank you, I'm Chelsea Williams, I'm on Springdale Avenue in Hattborough, I had two questions, one was what will the IEP. Situation look like for children that do the virtual only through Hatters Academy? And also through Hatters Academy, will it be Hattborough Horsham teachers teaching the program? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Okay, next is Vic Vessi, V S E Y. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. And just a reminder, again, please state your name and address.
Hi, I hope you can hear me, name is Victoria Vessi, I live in Hattborough. And I have a student who was at Penny Pack, obviously, they would nominally be a crooked billlet this coming year. She will be a second grader. The first thing I wanted to say was the same thing that the other, the person before me asked. Which is whether or not this, the Hatters Academy and other virtual will be taught by Hattborough Horsham's teachers. Or if it will be contracted out to a third party. I also would like to say that I certainly do appreciate that. The district understands that some parents are unwilling to work with a hybrid. Or fully in person model and starting with a cyber option from scratch. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm going to respond to a few. So again, thank you for your comments, I'll offer some some general responses to some of the themes that we're hearing to the questions. We we obviously have a a commitment to ensuring that students' individual needs are met. And so, you know, I understand the clarity around. What students would be needed to or requested to attend. If we were in a hybrid more more days than in others, that's a hard question to answer across the board. Because students' IEPs are just that individualized. We'll look at the individual supports necessary for each student and try to program for them accordingly. So the IEP, even if student were to be in the Hatter Academy and go virtually. We will ensure that IEP needs are met. And hopefully, the program will be as staffed and supported as much with Hattborough Horsham School District teachers as possible. I don't, there are, there, I don't want to promise that that would be the only. Delivery of instruction, it really in some ways depends on the. The interest level in that program and our staff capacity to to do so. There are programs through the intermediate unit, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit that offer online options. For families that we could work with as a third party, but again, we'd want to prioritize our supports for students. We do recognize that the social emotional needs of kids are. Are are paramount during this time, and in many ways, this is a unique challenge to what the start of the year may look like. You know, one thing that happened last spring is despite going into emergency remote learning. Teachers did know their students and did have a relationship with students at the end of the year. With the new year. You know, maintaining relationships and and strengthening relationships to help students feel comfortable. In school, working with their teachers is will be an additional challenge. Regardless of the option, if we're fully in, even if we're fully. Fully back, you know, working with communicating and building a relationship through a mask is more challenging. So we know that that's something that that exists. Regarding childcare, we do have the ability to. Have offer a recommendation for childcare that could be different than the K twelve program. So just like we made decisions about the summer program and summer childcare that were unique to our year program, we could. Make a recommendation that would be different for that, we do recognize that any of these scenarios. Present some hardships for staff, I mean, I'm sorry, for for families with childcare and. That is, that is an unfortunate reality of any of these options. What I will say to you is regardless of what the option of recommend is, we'll take steps to try to mitigate the impact to the extent we can. But there will, there will be challenges to that. And we did look at some of the streaming options and ways to connect students that may be in school while there's a not in school. There, it's not, it's not an option that's completely off the table, but there are some, it is somewhat cost prohibitive and. And there's some challenges with installing the technology in the classroom to to livestream classes while they're at home. If you simply set up. A Microsoft Teams meeting or a Zoom meeting in a classroom, there's a lot that's lost through audio and video that wouldn't wouldn't be transferable, but. Connecting students, whether they're in or out of school is is important, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, next up is Christopher Moss, M A U S. Or you can unmute, go ahead and speak and please remember name and address.
Hi, good evening, this is Chris and Stacy Moss, we're on Kingsdown Court in Horsham. Our girls will be going into seventh and ninth grade this school year. And I I believe that we had already touched on some of this, but. Just to kind of reiterate the question at the middle school and the high school level. If if our students would choose the one hundred percent virtual Hatter Academy option. Would the students have the same teachers and content as those doing the in person instruction? Or or would the district be outsourcing teachers for the virtual learning? And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have Saeda Logan. Okay, now unmute and go ahead and speak.
Hi, yes, my name is Saeda Logan and what I've heard numerous times is that we need support. So what I'd like to offer, we, I just opened a childcare center in Horsham. It's called SMG Clubhouse, I am a former public school teacher.
All right, but this is not the time for advertising for your businesses.
Okay, I was just providing support for families.
I understand that this is not not for for advertising for a business, this is for, you know, people commenting. About items for the school district and and it's not an appropriate item, thank you.
Sorry, next up is someone who is a long string of random characters that starts with D J I K. Should be able to go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hello, um, I don't, okay, I'm assuming that's, can you hear me?
Uh, we can, please state your your name and.
I'm Chris Reese Quick and I live on Avenue B in Horsham. My concern, honestly, I have, well, going to be three children in the district, I have. An eleventh grader, a soon to be twelfth grader, but I have a a five year old who will be going to kindergarten. And I think my concern honestly is for him, because I don't. I don't understand how that's going to work, I feel with, you know, daycare, his preschool being closed. I unfortunately with both me and my husband working full time, nonstop during the pandemic. I feel like he's the one who is going to be behind and I'm very fearful of that. And I don't know how. He, how a a five year old who, you know, honestly has the attention span of a fly is going to be able to. Be engaged and be able to learn the things he needs to. In order to have robust learning, I'm I'm very fearful of that, I'm fearful of him being in a school setting. But I'm also fearful of him being home because I don't have the time or the capability, myself or my husband, to instruct him. And it's not for my older children to try to do that either in between whatever their model would be. So I I'm I'm very fearful of that, I really don't understand, hopefully someone can help me understand. How you would help the kindergartners and first graders that these are important times for them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Next we have Ashley, you should be able to go ahead and unmute and speak.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Ashley Rivera, I live at four fifty Jacksonville Road in Hattborough. And I just have a concern for the next meeting, is it going to be able to have more than five hundred people? Attend it because it took me probably an hour to get on to this meeting, so I missed most of the information being presented. And then just to kind of back up with the childcare, like if my daughter is going to school two days a week. She's gonna have to go somewhere else other three days a week because I'm going to be at work probably, so. But I also just want to take the minute to say, thanks to all the teachers that were able to like jump into this and be able to get us through the end of the school year. Because I know that as a teacher myself, it was insane and just being able to. Throw together a Google Classroom or Canvas page and get your kids to navigate it, who have the attention span of flies, like it was amazing to see such a. Camaraderie with everybody and everyone just able to come together to the end of the school year, so thanks. Thanks for that and I hope we'll be able to start off just as strong, just with better supports in place from the beginning of the year. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Next we have D V S A R R D R, you should be able to go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, my name is Jamie Farrer, I live on Bryant Court in Horsham. And I'm wondering if the district has considered doing what some of the other districts have done and prioritizing. Elementary school kids, so K through five going full time, so that they can actually be in the classroom. And be learning, since those children, I think, are those that need to have in person instruction most. Whether that would include having to spread out in other district buildings or not. I too have a rising kindergartner and we were in Hattborough Horsham's pre K program last year. So we did the virtual learning, which honestly was an unmitigated disaster, we had thirty minutes of of Zoom meetings. Every day and which ultimately just was show and tell, all the kids had to be muted. At all times or else they were just screaming over each other. And often there were technical issues almost on every. Every meeting, so half the time we only had about fifteen minutes of instruction. And I just can't imagine, as the, one of the other. Women said, how you could possibly have kindergartners. Learning virtually all day, I mean kindergarten, I can't see how you could possibly teach a child how to read and write over the internet. And for parents that are working, my husband and I both are full time. Work full time outside of the home, how it's possible, we'd have to, someone would have to sit with him. All day, every day to help him use the computer and make sure that he stays on task. I'm also wondering whether on the, if it's a hybrid model or all virtual on the days that they are home. How long you expect a student to sit in front of this computer screen, is it really going to be? A full school day, nine to three, I don't see how that's healthy for a child, nor do I see how that's feasible, especially for an elementary school student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next is Rebecca. Again, reminder, everyone, please state your name and address.
My name is Rebecca, I am on Sawmill Lane in Horsham. One of the concerns that was brought up earlier was just that there's some of these schools just do not have room for social distancing. My daughter is going into third grade at Blair Mill Elementary and that that school is particularly small, so I'm not sure if we've already know that there's kind of no room for that. Why that's even on the table. Um, the other concern I have is the last session that they had, there was pretty much zero guidance for parents as to navigating these online. Learning activities for the kids, it was very confusing. We definitely had issues with tiers and everything else with them not being able to pay attention, questions you can't get readily answered. So if we're going to be going to a hybrid model or virtual, you know, are those concerns going to be addressed, is there going to be guidance for parents to teach us how? We should be best helping them. And if we are doing a hybrid or full back to school, you know, before and after care is definitely an issue, I know we spoke about. Not, you know, seeing if we can get parents to opt out of transportation, but a lot of us work full time and we we need somebody. To take them before and after care, so how, what does social distancing look like in that atmosphere?
Thank you.
Next we have I N. Can go ahead and unmute and speak and just reminder for everyone, name and address, please.
Hi, um, this is Elsa, I live on Winmere Drive in Horsham. And I will have an elementary and middle schooler. And I think I just want to maybe make a statement about what I felt like I heard is more information coming out about Hatters Academy. I hope that that information would maybe capture. How that would look different than possibly opting into some of the Pennsylvania wide online charters. Although I feel like I'm hearing you're going to keep this in Hattborough Horsham School District. I think I would just, especially if I'm being asked to maybe select that option. Would hope that there would be some more information about how that would be the same or similar. To be able to maybe make that decision. For me and my family, I guess that's just what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is M Cottingham. Can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Thank you. My daughter, well, my name is Michelle and I live at one thirty three Byberry Road in Hattborough. My daughter is going into sixth grade, so it's a new school, new. New teachers, I'm concerned about the heat in there since it is a lack in air, lack of air conditioner. Either for for hybrid or full in in school learning. That I'm going to keep on getting calls and. Um, that I'm gonna keep on getting calls and everything's gonna have to be adjusted for it. Um, so what would be the plan for that?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next is Jillian Beckhart. You should be able to unmute and go ahead and speak.
Hello, my name's Jillian Beckhart and I'm at 20 Meeting House in Horsham. My concern is when we went to online learning, I have five children. I have one going into second, I have seventh, eighth, ninth, and 11th. My issue when we use Canvas was very frustrating as a parent because each teacher posted their information differently. And having a child with an IEP who has struggles was very hard trying to help them when I, as a parent, couldn't find the work. Would that be addressed differently? Will teachers have to post stuff a specific way so the parents can find it easier? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, shall I?
Go ahead. Yep.
Yep. So just a few of the responses and thank you again for, for your comments and feedback. Yes, we look to try to communicate consistently using Canvas or whatever platform we're using based on the level. What there's a, a consistent expectation that teachers and parents would, would, would know. So they wouldn't be wandering to all kinds of different locations. Regarding the Keith Valley or the heat plan, if there were, if there were cases that we, that we knew the building would be closed, we would of course communicate that as, as soon as possible. But that would be a situational response. And, and let me just say that I, I, none of this is ideal and I wish it were. I wish, I wish, I wish the responses were us, us helping enhance something that's already, already in good standing, but, but, but this isn't ideal. And one of the populations, when we talk about not ideal, is your younger, your youngest students. And we, we know that virtual learning for your, your K1, 2 students particularly is challenging because of their dependence on adult support. So I think we can do things better to, to help support families and students with what, what instruction at that level could be. But there's not gonna be a situation where we're gonna have independent kindergarten students working as, as we know. Um, and social distancing, of course, is, is challenging at that level. Uh, yes, we will be providing more information about the Hatter Academy before anyone would be asked to commit to that. Uh, we do wanna assess some people's general interests and then we'll provide some specific information um, about what they, what a family would be signing up for prior to that. We'll have hopefully the, any technical challenges with the number of participants worked out by the next meeting. Uh, I know that we have accounts set up that can accommodate up to a thousand people. So we would anticipate that problem being resolved. I'm sure Greg will work through that. There was another question about lunch and the flexibility with lunch and using other spaces. Uh, we are looking at that. It's sometimes challenging to use other spaces in the building like gyms for lunches because that's not always an option in every building. Um, and sometimes we have programs running in those, instructional programs running in, in those areas at that time. But we are looking at trying to space students out for lunches, including students being outside. One of the general recommendations, just from a health and safety standpoint, is trying to be outside as the virus spreads. It's less likely to spread in that setting. And there were a couple of questions about using the high school facility and, and having students work at the high school level remotely and students spread out. We have looked at that. Other districts have looked at that. Um, there are challenge, significant challenges with that option, um, including just having enough staff. I mean, if you split your, split your elementary students and send some of them to the, to a high school building that where high school students are working remotely, you just, just don't have the staff, quite frankly, to that number of, of elementary teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, that's some working with you to figure out what happened, but I apologize for the technical issues tonight. Next we have Kelsey. You can unmute and go ahead and speak and a reminder to everyone, names and addresses, please.
Hi, my name is Kelsey. I live at, um, 583 Coach Aunt Road in Horsham. I, we have three young boys, the oldest who's going into first. I guess so, obviously, um, like some other concerns with other parents, my husband and I work full-time. Um, when we were doing the virtual in the spring, I was relying on my mother and my mother-in-law. Um, you know, I know other people are probably relying on other people in their family to watch their children. As, I'm gonna pull this out. As a millennial, I mean, I was, it was easy for us to use Seesaw. My parents and my mother-in-law, it was, it was a little bit more challenging for them to use it. Go, moving forward for online content, that might be something to look into. You know, what, who might be staying home with the children since, you know, their parents might be working. Um, and you know, what is easiest for them to teach. Also, um, another statement, you know, I know things have changed since I was in first grade and trying to, you know, I thought our kindergarten teacher did a really great job of using Seesaw and everything, but trying to make sure that we're teaching our son the right way to move forward for the next grade was a little challenging. So if there would be like materials provided for just parents, like pre-work or like books that we could reference, that would also be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jessica McCracken. You are allowed to talk and you can unmute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jessica. I live at 41 Hunt Drive. My children attend Simmons. I was just wondering if, at least for our younger students, um, kindergartners especially, uh, my child just finished kindergarten and just wondering if there's any consideration for having the same teacher next year. Um, he had Ms. Jones. She did an excellent job. She knows how he learns. The relationship is already built. So I was just wondering if that could be a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Ryan Geltz and I live on West Moreland Avenue, Haprow. Um, and I guess I just wanted to know, uh, I have a middle schooler and a elementary student. For middle school, I know they're suggesting that they stay, like try to stay in one place. Uh, have we thought about having them stay and having the teachers rotate out? Um, and also I, I have, uh, my mother lives in an in-law suite here with us, so she's high-risk. I'm just concerned, how are we going to enforce that students are wearing their mask? And, you know, is that going to be strictly enforced or what? Because that will be a serious deciding factor for me. And that's all.
Thank you.
And next up is Erica. Erica, go ahead. Can unmute and then.
Hi, hi, I'm new. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Hi, I'm new to the area, so I actually want to say I appreciate you doing this and allowing us to speak. Um, but I, unfortunately I don't have a support system like some of the other callers. So I will need childcare for the other days for the cohort. So I've heard someone mention something about a clubhouse. Is there anything, can you help me navigate that to help support the learning environment and supporting system for my son?
I, I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to as a clubhouse.
I heard someone, I guess they mentioned the clubhouse. I didn't catch it. I think it's the G clubhouse or something like that. I guess it's like a, a, a after-school program or childcare program.
School before school care. Uh, the information for that is on our website. Um, and the director, you can reach out to her for more information as well.
And they'll provide care the opposite days that.
We don't know right now what that plan looks like, but that, that's going to be in the future. We'll, we'll figure out the details of that if we will be able to hold it.
Okay. Is there a website you can refer me to, since I'm in a new, not our school website, but also a community website? Just in case. I know I'll probably have to get a jump on this.
Our school website is haprow-horsham.org.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, I'm sorry, I might have, there was someone that I, I accidentally never put in my device. So please, uh, if you had your hand raised, check and make sure that you're raised. I'm not sure what they want, but, or maybe they, um, lowered their hand, I'm not sure. Anyway, uh, next up is Kristen Fazio. Uh, you can unmute and.
Yeah, this is Chris Fazio. We live at 685 Misty Hollow Drive in Horsham. Uh, last week, North Penn announced their plans for reopening, which included all three options. And it was, it's going to be, obviously unless something changes, the family's decision, each individual family, to decide which is best for them. Uh, I'm curious why we haven't moved to adopt that and are seemingly looking at more of a one-size-fits-all. Um, everybody on this call has, has their own personal issues and questions and for their families. So why can't we do what North Penn is doing and offer all three options? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Erin White. Should be able to unmute and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, my name's Erin. I am on Summer Avenue in Horsham. Um, I guess I was just wondering, going off the last female that just spoke about what resources will be more or less available for the parents. Um, I am a single mother of two. Um, my son is going into second grade in Blair Mill Elementary. I recently just lost my job due to COVID. Um, and I won't be able to get a new job if I don't have an idea, like if they are going back to virtual learning, whether or not it's full-time or even three times a week. I can't afford a household and all that, staying on unemployment and, you know, just everyday living, more or less for those mothers that are out there that are in that lower income um, without some kind of help or at least someone to talk to with ways that we can get the help that we need for our children to succeed in this life, especially being in the elementary schools like others have mentioned. Um, it's very hard, especially with a two-year-old in the house, um, teaching him from nine to three. He's constantly distracted, non-stop. Uh, so I ended up teaching him at nine, 10 o'clock at night after she went to bed. So it makes things very hard. Uh, thank you so much for your time and great job with trying to communicate with everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Cheryl Anne. You can go ahead and unmute and speak and a reminder of.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Anne Rude and I live on Lala Road in Haprow. Uh, I wanted to say that I'm grateful that you're offering the Hatter Academy. I have two kids in the district, a rising junior and a rising fifth grader. And my high schooler has risk factors, uh, as well as I also have risk factors, which makes it, um, a better option for us to have a Hatters Academy. So I'm grateful that, uh, right from the get-go that you're gonna be offering that. And I just wanna say that I do hope that, uh, Haprow Horsham School teachers will be the ones that will be offering the instruction. We've been very happy in the district and I hope that it won't be outsourced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Stacy. Been unmuted and I will go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Stacy. Um, I live on Barrington Street in Horsham. And my question is just, you presented four options. And after you send a survey out and that results are reviewed by the district, are you looking to, kind of what the other caller said, wean down to one or two options? Or are you still looking at the four options and just getting an idea of where people's interests lie? And then, um, on top of that, will we know at the August 3rd meeting what the district's plan is so that we can, um, plan for our personal families and our childcare?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Evislag, that is our last, um, live comment. Would you like to address something before we move to the email comments?
Uh, sure, Madam President. Um, so regarding the options, um, yes, we did present four options. We are, I think, out of necessity, need to plan for all three of the scenarios because of the possibility of fluidly transitioning between those three at some point throughout the year. Uh, so the recommendation on the third will be what, how we should start the year. Uh, but we will have to continue planning for the other, other options as well because the possibility exists that we could be transitioning between them throughout the year. Um, we are looking at ways to su- support parents through this with some parent orientation of how to use platforms, how to support children's learning at home. That's always a delicate matter, but we, we did hear that as, as, as an area of need. There was a suggestion about teacher looping and whether teachers would stay with students. Uh, we've looked at that in, I, I, I wouldn't wanna falsely promise that that would something that we would be able to do across, across the district. There are some scenarios where that's a possibility. And there are some advantages to students who would be able to stay with their teacher for the following year. Uh, it's not something we would be able to do, um, K-12 across the board. And we've looked at different options at the middle school level with how teams could transition or to minimize some of the, um, some of the transit in, in classes. And that does include perhaps some teacher rotation, but there of course complexities with that as well. And regarding mask wearing, we will, um, enforce mask wearing. We, we, we will have mask expectations for staff and students and expect to enforce that. Um, that's, to me, it's a very clean, uh, clear health and safety issue. And we are not going to, uh, to tolerate individuals who don't wanna adhere to the guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Riker, do you have the email comments for us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, first comment is from Lisa Finstra. Uh, first, I'd like to thank school administration and the staff for their hard work and dedication to our students during this unprecedented time. The decision that needs to be made moving forward into the next school year isn't an easy one, but I know our district will do their best with whatever decision is made. I would however, like to take a moment to discuss one of our most vulnerable population of students that have been hit hardest by the loss of school learning. Our students with significant special needs have been without intensive teaching and supplemental services since last March. Many of them are regressing and struggling behaviorally due to the loss of their structure, routine, and services. Our special services department and my son's team from Keith Valley Middle School in particular have gone above and beyond to do what they can and have been a steady source of encouragement. It's still not enough. I am reaching out to the board and administration tonight to ask that we, if we do not return to the classroom learning this fall, then we consider some alternatives for the special needs students beyond virtual learning. Would it be possible to consider an outpatient model for receiving one or, or one-on-one therapeutic services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy at some of the school locations? By appointment with safety protocols in place during and after each session, I believe that anything we can do to safely to improve upon the. I believe that anything we can do to safely to improve upon the current virtual plan for students who really cannot and do not benefit from it will be welcomed by the families of these students. Obviously, this wouldn't need to occur if the student returns to in-school learning in the fall, but if we don't, then please serious consider any alternatives that will improve the quality of life for our special needs students during this time. Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Nicole Rechner. Good evening. I want to thank you and all your dedication to the students and families of Hattrow Horsom, especially those new on the board. I'm sure this is not how you anticipated your first year. I want to say that from my family and me, which includes four children, three attending schools in the district and one that will enter elementary school next year, I would feel more comfortable with a virtual platform for my kids this year. I don't want to leave the district for a cyber school though, so I would love it if there were a virtual option for HH families. Thank you very much for all you do for our community. Next comment is from Chelsea Williams. Hello, I am writing to ask that if we could possibly have another survey sent out to parents over the next week or so before a decision is made. When the first survey was sent out, the numbers were dropping and things seemed as though they were going in the right direction. However, at this point in time, numbers are spiking again and I feel as though our voices should be heard with how we are feeling now about school than when things seemed to be getting better. Uh, next comment was simply uh, someone looking for the link for this meeting. Next comment was from Mandy Vogel. And the penny pack closure was discussed earlier this year. Families who attended the school were told that school assignments would be announced in June. I understand COVID has delayed this. Is there an expected date for school assignments to be announced? Next comment is from Giselle Javina Javinho. Good morning. I hope everyone is in good health. I have two questions for tonight's meeting. My child is in the autism spectrum. She has an IEP and a one-to-one aid in autistic support classroom. She won't be able to sit in front of a computer at home without assistance. Both parents work. How is the school district planning to manage their rights to one-to-one instruction written on the IEP during the school year? Second question, is the pre-K program going to be open for the coming school year? Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Brianna Hart. Hello, I have seen many posts, articles and lists regarding in-person schooling for the upcoming academic year from many sources, including the CDC and PDE. All of them seem to include every possible protection against the spread of COVID nineteen, but none seem to keep our children's education in mind. While safety is of great importance, I worry that implementing all of these strict measures and suggested and suggested from various sources would make our schools akin to a prison setting and would be detrimental to learning. We as a nation have spent decades researching educational best practices and we have changed our classrooms significantly to implement those practices in order to better serve our students. I implore the board to keep these practices in mind when making a decision for September. COVID nineteen is the hot button issue of two thousand twenty. It is not the only threat our kids and educational futures. Uh, another comment, I think from Brianna Hart. I know the state has made it clear that students with medical exemptions, including mental health struggles, will not be required to wear masks in school, but how will Hattrow Horsom Schools handle those kids? Will they still be able to socialize with peers in the classroom or will they be required to stay six feet away from everyone at all times? Will they permit it to eat in the cafeteria and attend recess with their peers? Will the treatment of any student who can't wear a mask be different from those who can? Next comment is from Scott Connor. What are the differences in operational costs between in-classroom, virtual and hybrid? Uh, comment. Uh, you can't even get Zoom to function under the demand for the meeting tonight. How are you going to deliver anything like a normal education? Comment from Monica Aducci. We all have a right to participate. There are a lot of people who can't get in. Some of them are your educators and parents of students. Allison Coon, is there a different way to broadcast meeting that allows more than five hundred participants? Also, is there an agenda? And that concludes the virtual comments that were submitted via email.
Thank you. Did you want to address any of those items, Scott? You're on mute.
I apologize. I believe most of those were addressed through our Q and A. Uh, there was a question around the the school assignments and we'll reach out to that up particular family who was questioning about the school assignment.
Okay. Alright, so I think that we are moving on now to the consent agenda. So I am seeking approval uh, for the consent agenda items. A through I.
So moved.
Mary in second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, human resources action items. A and B.
David Brown, may commission to approve.
Eric Coon, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, business office action items. A through H.
Sherry Brown.
Uh, Bob, did you have any comments about any of these items?
Uh, Madam President, I think they're all pretty self-explanatory. Uh, some comments were made in the public sections. Maybe there are some credit change orders and some change orders that pertain to the Crooked Billit School project. I think all of which dead out to a um, a reduction in overall cost to the budget. Um, another item, Plan K approval is just the approval for the refinancing of our existing bonds that we did a month or so ago. Um, a list of technology equipment that is obsolete that will be disposed of. And the project, capital project um, that we are approving. Simmons Cooling Tower Project and it's going to the low responsible and responsive bidder. Uh, this project was approved previously by the board.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, special services action item. A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we move to reports. Uh, Ms. Hussenger Huff, do you have any report for the curriculum committee?
Nothing additional than what was already presented this evening.
Okay, uh, Ms. Connor Halston, do you have any Eastern Center report?
No, I do not.
Uh, Mr. Coons, do you have a facilities committee report? I think we do have presentation um, from Dewey.
I do not, but Dewey does.
Jamie, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, I can speak up a little bit.
Okay, I'm close to my computer. Good evening, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I just have a a brief update on the Crooked Build Elementary School project. I'm assuming Greg is in control of my little PowerPoint presentation, so we'll get right to it. The only slide with text gives you a brief update. And just a big shout out and thank you to the community, uh, to the administrative team, uh, to the board and and really the Hattrow Horsom community as a whole for all their continued support. Everyone, including the contractors, has been working hard. Uh, we've been getting great assistance from the Borough of Hepburn as well as we try to wrap up the project and and we really have been successful. So we do truly hope that we see your students in this building. Um, this fall, it's very encouraging now that the monument has been restored to see a lot of the community members and their children walk by the school district and wave to uh, us and uh, give us thumbs up. And uh, so we're headed in the right direction. Recently, we've gotten our state elevator inspection. Uh, Joe Crowe and his crew are diligently uh, applying coats of wax and cleaning the building. Furniture has been received in the past week. Playgrounds are installed. Technology is up and running. And uh, as you can see when you've driven by, a lot of the site work and paving is complete. We are finishing up with the kitchen and the Department of Health Inspection, fire alarm and security activation, um, some very special graphics that we're going to be pleased to unveil in the rotunda. Uh, owner training for the district folks and final inspection. All of that is working well. And the district really moves materials in at the end of the uh, month. Uh, Greg slid right by it, but we appear to be on schedule and also on or under budget. Um, that's important for me to tell everyone. Yeah, don't slide by that, Greg. There's a couple of photos here um, for everyone to take a look at, uh, regular drone photos that uh, show the newly refurbished uh, and replaced uh, Crooked Billit Monument that's out front. Um, as well as really the finishes that have applied to the uh, the building as a whole. You can go ahead to the next one, Greg. In the back, what you can't see from the uh, roadway, um, is the larger playground. The uh, bus turnaround, the hard play area. The gazebo, which used to be uh, down on Meadow Brook, has been uh, put back in place behind Crooked Billit. Um, and uh, the entrances to the cafeteria, the large group instruction rooms. It's just uh, looking to be a great building. Inside, if you go to the next for me, Greg. Uh, if you haven't seen the monument, please drive by and and take a look. Our restoration expert has has done a uh, a marvelous job. And the urn has been restored to the top of the monument, which uh, had been uh, lost when the monument was moved from Monument Avenue years ago. If you go forward again, just a quick sneak peek inside the rotunda. The Terraza logo is looking uh, spectacular and there'll be many more surprises for the community inside this space when you get to go inside and see it for real. Keep going, Greg. A finished classroom. This is what it generally looks like. We have classrooms by uh, color, wax courtesy of uh, Joe Crowe and and his crew, but our two-story classroom, it is ready. All it needs um, is uh, uh, the students and the teachers to be able to return and the community as a whole. The gym space is absolutely spectacular. Um, full-size gymnasium with the wood floor. Uh, again, we are uh, ready to go. And if you go down one more, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for the board. I uh, I thank you and we will continue to do our best.
Looks good, Jamie.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's exciting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Looks great.
Hey, uh, Dr. Taylor, do you have any federal reports, reports, federal programs report?
I think Monica went on vacation.
Oh, she's sorry. I'm sorry, Madam President. I was muted. No report this evening. Thank you.
You're more than what, you're more than welcome to go on vacation.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McCowd, do you have anything for the finance committee?
I do not, unless Bob has anything.
No, uh, under budget and on time. Is that what Jamie said?
Uh, Mr. Brown, HR Committee.
Uh, no, we will be having a uh, a session after after the meeting today.
Uh, I do not have a report for the MCIU. Uh, Ms. Schultz, do you have a policy committee report?
We do, um, and actually we do have some readings that we want to, um, I guess, vote on. And perhaps Sarah can clarify if I if I get this incorrect, but there are two policies that we have been in discussion with and last meeting, we we had a first look, kind of like first peek. And they are on policy number two thirteen, which is an update to our grading policy. And then policy number zero zero six, which is um, an upgrade to our local board procedures. In that particular policy, we're consolidating zero zero six point one into just zero zero six. So we're going to need to do a couple of things here. Um, Sarah, I think that we need to call for a vote to accept these as a first reading. Is that correct?
Yep, so typical request for motion and a second. And then this is for um, again, a first reading um, on these policies. And just like normal procedure for policies, they need to have two readings for them to be adopted. Yeah, so we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
My second.
Any discussion on the policies? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, Ms. Brown, do you have a PSBA report?
The um.
Excuse me, Madam President. I believe we need to vote on a repeal. Is that correct?
Do we need to vote separately on the repeal and the?
Sarah, is it correct?
Yeah, it depended on how uh, DJ worded the motion. If she worded it as it said in the action items, you can essentially do it all as one, um, but it's simply, it's simple to just to do a first reading repeal of zero zero six point one. Again, this is just like other policies adoption. It's not repealed until the second reading. Okay, so we're looking for a motion on the repeal of zero zero six point one.
Oh, move, Terry Brown.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, Ms. Brown, PSBA.
Um, as you know, they're meeting every day, every week, sorry, once a week. And um, we've been, the conversations have been around a lot of things that Scott talked about. The broadening of access charter school reform, which we adopted last time uh, at our last meeting, equities, federal caring, so on and so on. Um, but what they're also doing is a draft of policies being updated to address COVID nineteen. And again, a lot of the things, the concerns are the issues that Scott brought up in his presentation. Lesson plans, but a couple of them, communicable diseases, immunization, a physical examination for students and employees, attendance and tardiness, job-related expenses, sick leaves, and that goes on. The other thing that they're looking at is uh, Title Nine, they've added discrimination slash Title Nine. Uh, sexual harassment and attachment for students and employees. Uh, possibly other policies that need to be updated regarding Title Nine will be two forty-seven, hazing, two forty-nine bullying and cyberbullying, and two fifty-two dating violence. Uh, the only other thing that I want to bring to your attention today is posting the agenda, I think it's House Bill ten sixty-nine, which is supposed to post the agenda twenty-four hours in advance. Well, they changed that so that if something comes up during the meeting, you can change the agenda during the meeting with the majority vote. And that's my report.
Thank you. And we.
Excuse me? Can you repeat that?
Yes, um, and I'm going to read what I have. Um, posting of the agenda is now twenty-four hours in advance. The House Bill says that, ten sixty-nine, but because of COVID nineteen and because we never know what's what we need to address at the time, they decided that we can change the agenda during the meeting with the majority vote.
Okay. Okay.
Does that mean you can
And that has been passed already.
You can add something to a meeting even though it's not on the agenda?
Yes, there's, but we have to have a majority vote.
Does it, does it have to be COVID-related? Or can you, so you can just, so, so going forward now, we can just have an agenda on Friday and during the meeting, change the agenda on Monday with a majority vote.
I know that this is because of COVID-19.
Well, I'm not, I'm not
That's a good point. I will check it. I will check and find out.
I will review this and to see where it is in the process and exactly what the intention is. Right. I know right now the board members can make a motion during a meeting to discuss something else that's not necessarily on the agenda. I'm not sure, you know, what's really going on with this. So at the, by the next meeting, I'll really look at this and give you a good answer.
And Sarah, there's a, there's a meeting tomorrow and I'm going to ask to
Right now, right now, as a board, a member can change the agenda for something to move to executive session outside of the agenda, but if the agenda is posted to the public, you can't change the agenda 24 hours before the meeting.
I really, I'm going to check tomorrow. I have a meeting tomorrow and I'll check. And Sarah's going to check. So between the two of us, we'll know more. Thanks, Eric. For your questions, I will check. It's a good question.
Okay. Dr. Everslag, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick items. First, I just wanted to share, as you might imagine, it's been a busy start to my tenure here. It's been 20 busy days, but really positive and encouraging days. And I really want to thank members of the community and the the school district team who have really extended a nice warm welcome. And I would just appreciated the various perspectives that people have shared in trying to address this complex issue that we're all that we're all tackling. And then I wanted to just get provide a quick PIAA update. We had approved at our last meeting the PIAA return to return to play plan. So last week, we did have student athletes in the fall at sports and in band return. We had around 300 students participate throughout the week. The plan was, the staff did a nice job of adhering to the plan and adhering to all the guidelines. Mr. James and his team were were providing supervision for that. There were three reportable incidents that occurred through the week. None of them are COVID-related, but it did speak to the plan being followed. There were two students who had registered temperatures who were had to, had to leave. And they, again, not COVID-related, and one was a travel quarantine. But overall, there was, there was good compliance with the plan and students and coaches were adhering to distancing expectations. At this point, they're only there, we are delaying any contact in the programs definitely. So the only activities will be conditioning and skills outdoors. But they're monitoring that again on a daily basis. And if there are revisions to that plan, we will bring them forward as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any old business? Under new business, we have the resolution on anti-racism. And Dr. or Mr. Riker, you're going to read that?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Madam President. This is a resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate by the Board of Directors of the Haprock Horsham School District. Whereas we are deeply saddened and outraged by the recent killing of George Floyd and violence against black men and women. The subsequent protests have shined a spotlight on the harmful effects of racism and inequality. Furthermore, the public response has highlighted the racial trauma that our black students, families, staff and communities have not only endured for centuries, but continue to face today. Whereas we must recognize that racism and hate have no place in our schools and society. However, we must understand that racism is systemic and it is unconsciously and consciously rooted in our institutions, policies and practices. Consequently, we acknowledge that we must look at our own school policies and practices through an anti-racist and equity lens to address traces of racism and inequity that still exist within our own school community. Whereas we must center the voices of staff, students, families and communities who have historically endured discrimination and marginalization. Their, their lived experiences and stories require attention, require respect, require empathy, and most importantly, require action. Therefore, it is essential that we establish an expectation that a diversity of students, families and community members, specifically those who have been ignored, discriminated against and marginalized are heard and included on substantive, on substantive of school and district issues. Whereas we must better educate ourselves and seek to educate the community on the historical and current impact of racism and discrimination on our students, families and communities, as well as understand our role in perpetuating such inequity. Through continuous professional development and opportunities for honest dialogue and listening sessions, we hope to build partnerships in the community focused on overcoming racism and other barriers. By doing so, we can create opportunities to ensure that each child has the tools and supports needed to thrive. Whereas we must advocate and advance civil rights and cultivate an anti-racist school climate necessary to meet the needs of all students in our, in our care. Students, no matter their race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, language ability, disability and other identities deserve to feel safe, to feel seen and feel affirmed. Now therefore be resolved that the Haprock Horsham School Board unequivocally stand firm in collective, in our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment for every student, staff member, parent and community member. We commit to use our role as school board directors to recognize, respond and speak out against injustice and racial inequity in our school community. In support of this goal, the Haprock Horsham School Board commits to the following action steps. Support our comprehensive leadership teams at the district and school level to administer the planning, implementation and actions detailed in the Haprock Horsham School District culturally responsive schooling action plan. Recruit, hire and retain staff of color, including teachers, administrators and support staff. Increase the cultural proficiency of all teachers, administrators and staff through the adoption and implementation of a framework for culturally responsive teaching and learning. Increase outreach for the purpose of improved student achievement through community engagement with parents and community members of diverse backgrounds. And ensure practices that support the existence of a culturally proficient environment in every school. That concludes the resolution.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt it. Susan Hussinger Huff. And I second.
Discussion around the resolution. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is there any opposed? Okay. Are there any other new business? Any announcements? Okay, so I'm seeking approval for the German of the meeting.
I move to adjourn. I second. This is Terry Brown.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, have a nice evening. That is it for the meeting tonight. Thank you.